Your ears should have been burning this weekend, Nick.
I have them on.
We were with the shelves, we had a graduation party, we were all like, Becky was talking about your, um, talking about your son, Miles.
Oh, boy.
His child, his cast, he took my kids up there, he talked to them when they were gone. So they were wrestling matches for about two hours. He talked to order the meeting, business meeting, June 10, 2024. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Here.
Mrs. Lemon?
Here.
Mr. Metalla? Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Shalinski?
Here.
Mrs. Seko?
Here.
Mr. Taz?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
Mrs. Smachko?
Here.
Student report and achievements, anybody here tonight, student? May I have a motion to approve the minutes due to business meeting dated March 13, 2024 as presented?
Second.
Mr. Seko? With a second by Mr. Price, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any questions on the agenda tonight? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Seko? Second by Mr. Price, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public comment? Move on. What's one?
There were a few things that is attachments on Board Docs today, one was a, they go together a notice of a share of sale, and then a writ of execution has to do with that share of sale, and it's just a listing of the parcels out of Starpoint. And then the stipulation to settle was simply living up to something you all approved on a, a property assessment a while back. Finally, one second.
Thank you. Administrative reports, let's start with Mrs. Ferencio.
Good evening, everybody. So, uh, June is a month where we try to finalize everything, Jamie and I will work closely together on the purchase requisitions, um, the title funding, the federal funding, kind of wrapping up the 23, 24 school year. And then as soon, as soon as there's, well, in the process of doing that, I'm also being the 24, 25 consolidated application. Trying to work on today without the internet, it was a little shaky. But, uh, so, just, and then just being excited for the start of the new school year, looking at, um, Mr. Pushkar, I'll be working on the administrative retreat that's coming up in July, and then starting to talk about in service for the teachers.
Thank you. Mrs. Donald?
Good evening. Uh, I still don't have any new news on whether the state will pass the budget anytime soon. They're supposed to pass it by June 30th. Um, I did put into the budget, the final budget, a little bit of an increase, maybe half of what the governor had advised earlier. I, I don't, I think we're gonna get more than that, but I don't wanna, I wanna be kinda cautious on that. So I'll have all that for the June 24th, uh, meeting. That final budget will be an increase up to the index of 6.9%, which is a .985 mil increase, placing the mileage at 15.2645. And also paid back the tax anticipation of, thank you guys for having moved that, so that's paid back and done with, so. We won't be able to do that again this year, because it's from the, the deal we did with Mr. Muscatel.
Anything else, any other?
Uplifting news?
Thank you, Mrs. Donald.
Unofficially, a change to the included unit, the state may not have a complete budget until November.
Well, I saw they passed like pieces of.
You know, they made parts bit by bit, in the meantime, to have a complete budget.
We were trying to keep good news coming.
Thanks.
Wow.
Oh, no. Mrs. Manke?
Trying to grab it all together, with no internet today, so I'm pulling it all together for you. Uh, first of all, May was an extremely busy month of school. If we think about it, the last day of PSSA testing in my building was May 10th, and then school closed May 29th. So in 19 days, we completed all of the, at year-end school events that we typically would have April and May to do, or into June to do. So, I'm very proud of the fact that we had all of those items accomplished. Uh, May kicked off with Teacher Appreciation Week, and none of this would be possible without our teachers. So I thank them for their hard work, their commitment and dedication to the school district, and we celebrate them. And I did that for the week, I pushed it away from the first week, I did it the second week when testing was all over, so that I could devote some time to the teachers. Uh, the 4th grade wax museum, another phenomenal event that we had, we just keep adding to it and getting better every year. So I thank the 4th grade team of teachers and all the parents, and all of those who helped to supply costume pieces, because, you know, to get Christopher Columbus's gear all together, or, um, I think we had, uh, Bon Jovi this year. Uh, we had some other rock stars to get wings and to collect all of it, I thank all the volunteers who donate to us. The 5th grade move-up day, and the orientation went very well, thanks to Mrs. Roman, the 6th grade team. Uh, we did it a little bit differently, and I like the changes that the middle school made this year, pulling them all into the auditorium, and speaking to them as a whole group. I love the fact that the band and the chorus at the middle high school entertained them during their lunch. And they say a picture is worth a thousand words. I flooded your board report this month with just pictures, because you don't always get to see the faces of our students, and our teachers, and our faculty. And I spend most of my time, if I can get a snapshot of what's happening, to have the pictures to share out on ClassDojo, or to share with you. I'm sorry, that was my sister. I apologize. Uh, so, please enjoy all the pictures. Um, field trips, we did a few new field trips this year, this is the first year post-pandemic, that we were able to go on all of the field trips, and even actually added a few more. So, the 4th graders went to the Washington Wild Things Park, we have never done that before as a team. And so that went very well, although it was probably the hottest day of the school year that the students went, with their sunscreen and ball caps and sunglasses. Uh, we also did the Flight 93 National Memorial, that was through a grant. And the students came back with such memories and an experience, and we had such wonderful notes from parents, saying they appreciated that our 4th grade team took them on that field trip, to teach them about what happened that day. Um, we also did West Pike Bowl, our 5th grade teachers wanted to do something very interactive with the students, and so they looked into a bowling event, and the children had a wonderful time. What I'm very proud of is when our students go into pub, into public places, we always get compliments from the people, or the ownerships, or the business, businesses that tell us, like, our children are so mannerly, and so polite, and so kind. So, I thank all of the teachers in the district who teach our seven mindsets in our character education program, because that's what makes it worthwhile, that we're sending children back out to the community to share their polite and kind, and do good with others. I create, I created a last-day letter, and I posted it on Dojo, and I shared that with my board report with you, and it's truly meant, uh, every word that I said in it, and being pride, I'm being very proud of working in the district, and working with this team here administratively, and with the teachers across the district. Uh, graduation, for instance, I loved being included in our senior graduation, I love the fact that the teachers were able to participate this year. It just shows that we're a team and a unit, and we're doing what's best for children. Um, and I took, on the last day of school, after the students board the buses, and we playing music, and, and we sing in the horns, honk by the buses, we get together and we do a last-day photograph. Uh, and that's become a tradition here, so I put that in the board report for you to see all of those, uh, teachers, and all of the faculty and staff, support staff, custodians, uh, who help run the school year, and help us make the school year a success, so thank you again for the opportunity, have a great summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Manke.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Schaefer?
I don't know how I can follow that.
I had energy today.
Hello, everybody. Um, I'll be brief, um, most of my time as the school year concludes has been, um, scheduling. I've been working alongside Mr. Fadden and our counseling department, really, um, navigating and learning what the scheduling process looks like, and getting ready for next year. Um, it's obviously very involved, and I'm happy to be learning all of these things in preparation. Um, additionally, we're getting ready to launch our credit recovery program through our cyber, and so that's been monopolizing my time as well. And so we have an orientation session next Monday with our students that will be enrolled, and it's anticipated to go through August 9th. Um, additionally, I just wanna briefly bring up some of the celebrations that we did have in May up at the middle high school. Um, we did celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th through 10th up at the middle high school, doing little events each day for our teachers, just celebrating them each and every day. Our middle school teams had their field days and their awards ceremonies, and I was fortunate enough to be a part of that as well, just celebrating the joys of all of the accomplishments of our middle school students. We had our Remake Learning Night on May 8th, which was another success for the middle high school. Um, looking forward to collaborating again with Mrs. Ferencio for next year, um, and making it kind of an annual thing that we do up there. I also was fortunate enough to attend our Western Area Certificate Ceremony, and we graduated 19 students this year. Um, so that was incredible to witness. Um, something about this graduating class was this graduating class was actually the first class that I had, um, when I started here in 2017 as a 6th grade class. So it's, a lot of my students were at Western Area, so it was really meaningful, both Western Area and commencement this year. It was really kind of cool to see them all, um, move on after commencement, and know that I was a part of that, um, process all the way through. And then our commencement ceremony was naturally on the 23rd. Um, if you did not have the opportunity to attend, I invite you to take a look at our Facebook page at the Senior Spotlights, um, just to really celebrate each one of our graduates this year. Um, I think that's all for me, and I'm wishing you all a wonderful summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Mrs. Burton?
Good evening, everybody. Um, I wanna piggyback on what Maria said, um, I am so proud of our students that graduated from Western Area. Um, we had, in my department, like, a lot of students that went and were successful, they got their certifications. Um, I spoke to one young man and asked for some advice, because even though we had such a successful year, we had some students that, um, although they left certified, they're just not sure what they're going to do. Um, so, I am thinking of pulling a few of the graduating seniors back next year, scheduling some time to talk to them, to see if there's a better way for us to reach everybody and help those kids that we didn't reach to plan, um, how we can better service them. I mean, we were really lucky this year, OVR came in, we got a lot of kids involved with that, but we still have a handful that, um, were sad that we weren't able to get them everything that they needed. Um, with that being said, I enjoyed graduation. Today, I, um, went to another graduation with one of our place students, and I will say, I feel very honored being in a small district, that I can know the students and be a part of their celebrations, because I sat next to somebody that I've known for the last 13 years. And, um, at the end of the service, she's like, aren't you leaving? Because the parents were invited to, like, a luncheon, and I said, well, I have to go and talk to the parents. She's like, you know the parents? I'm like, yeah, wow, I know them, and she's like, wow. So, I feel honored that we all have that opportunity to know our families and know our students. So thank you, have a wonderful summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Mr. Navodakis?
Uh, good evening, uh, just really, uh, everybody is finishing the year, to me, it's almost like I'm starting, because I'm, we're already running, we're already prepping Chromebooks that we're turning in for next year for kindergarten, uh, giving, for me, reports, all the state reports and so forth, uh, giving things to Jamie that we need, uh, by the end of this month. And really, June is typically, reports are, a lot of reports are due June, July, and then come, August is when I can really start to, you know, put stuff together, but we're already starting now, trying to get ready for next year. The website's slowly coming along, hoping to, uh, have that out next week. Uh, we had a couple glitches and stuff, teacher pages didn't show up at all, so it's kind of pushed things back. We're working on a new, uh, lunch program, uh, for the point of sale, and for parents and so forth. More information will come with that, uh, probably late July, early August. Uh, and really, just, you know, I wanna thank Brian for his years of service, uh, he was across from me for the last 10 years, and, uh, I appreciate what he's done, and wish him best of luck.
Thank you.
Now, I have a question. How often do you replace the Chromebooks? Cause we have horses, we're on the agendas to.
To recycle, so those ones that are on that, are on that, some of them are eight years old, some are seven years old. Typically, it's about five years, after five years, if you would wanna see what they look like, I will take you up there and show. I mean, I know, no, like, seriously, like.
After five?
Yeah, after five, it's a five-year, they're basically good for five years. Now, cr, the, Google themselves typically only update a Chromebook for up to five years, but because of COVID and the shortages, they've changed it to seven or eight. And we keep some as, you know, cause the ones that really destroy them all the time, those are, we give those to them, cause then they're, you know, not much of a footprint for us. Uh, what we do too is we recycle all the screens out of those, and that's how I replace screens, I don't buy them, I don't buy them. So each screen that gets broken saves me $40.
Now, we're recycling 300, how many, do you typically just buy, like, a grade's worth every year?
Typically, we're depending on, right now, we're in a cycle, we're buying about 150, 75 per class. And right now, we're replacing 8th grade and 1st grade, and in between there, we're just making it to, to get them to that 8th grade, 8th grade piece, you know, a lot of schools will do three, they'll, they'll replace in kindergarten, 4th grade, and then 8th grade. But the ones that we're giving to kindergarten are ones that are, that seniors just had, or I may even keep the ones that were down there, because I don't have, and then hold on to these other ones as replacements for, for ones. Yeah, typically, when we start out, we're buying about 300, and then about 225, the last, we're down to 150 that we're replacing, because we're using some of the ones on the side as well, just trying to, but you have to keep that, because if we don't, we'll get stuck in some cycle. If we're gonna continue, you know, making sure that it gets one, you don't wanna be stuck buying 300 there, in a year.
Okay, thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Minfer?
Since you stole my thunder.
Oh, you can, you can roll with it.
Well, since you stole my thunder on the new POS system, um, so every year, we do, um, an update on all of our menus. Um, of course, we keep all the normal stuff that, like, the kids always eat, the pizzas, the Salisbury steaks, and stuff like that. Um, AirMark goes through and basically goes through and checks on what sells the most, which is, this year was breakfast for lunch, by the way. Everybody wanted to know, that was the hottest selling item for lunch. Um, so they go through and basically give us the best-selling items for lunch. And so we go through, we vitalize all the menus, so the menus for August and September will all look a little different. Uh, we'll go through with the kids, of course, and they'll tell me what they like, don't like, they'll tell me to change everything like they always do. Um, also, going into this year, breakfast is also free for both schools, again, that is across the state. I don't know if you guys do that or not. Um, our POS system, we meet every Wednesday with, uh, Mira Edge, who is gonna be running the POS system. Um, and they do updates and training to tell us what's going on with that. Um, any questions for me tonight? Alright, thank you, guys, have a good summer.
Thank you. Mrs. Slay?
Good evening, um, May is also a very busy month for me, and very busy this time, so, um, today we had our Princeton State Police on campus. Please pronounce that all the buses went through today, we didn't need two days. So, a lot of hard work, I was very impressed with the work that had gone in to get the buses ready. So we're finishing up this year, working on next year too, so, that's all I've got.
Good, I heard the softball team got relegated to be on time that day.
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
As long as you got a write-down, that's for good. Have a good summer.
Thank you. Mr. Zinkler?
Good evening, everyone. Um, like everyone else, um, through the month of May, uh, we just support staff in events going on. Um, and then, as like Nav said, we just jump right into it, so, we're full throttle on the custodial side. Staffing wise, um, we're two custodians down. Um, waiting on some applicants, we'll do some interviewing. Equipment's running pretty good, um, one kind of a hit on rooftop A, we lost some compressors in that, uh, that's been repaired. So, and that rooftop unit, um, is geared to the HS Cafe. That's really about it, um, just trying to think, going in grounds, we, summer projects, we agree upon, we're gonna do some asphalt work outside, and some crack sealing, um, which is good, and, um, trying to think what else.
There's another tree down too, at the softball field dead center, that big one by the playground.
One we talked about?
No, so there's one, the little field and right field.
Alright.
But the softball field dead center, the big tree, that one's behind too.
Alright, we'll get them down, yeah, we'll do them this summer, so. Um, and all the inspections, what you do annually, I have them all scheduled. Um, that's lead and water testing, your hood cleaning, the fire suppression system, and all your fire signatures, that's all scheduled. So, that's all I have, and if anybody has any questions for me? Have a good summer, everyone.
Thank you. And Mr. Fadden, your last business meeting with us?
Yes. Well, thank you, everyone, for putting up with me, with me the last 11 years, I really appreciate all your support over the time, uh, with Mr. Pushkar, Dr. Walsh, all the administrative team, all the teachers, just appreciative of everyone, the experience I've had here the last 11 years. Uh, really enjoy working in a small school, uh, Burgess Town will always be a part of me, like, I used to, I knew Steve and I would joke, we always liked to not say, from my last district, my last district. And it, it was amazing at one point that this, this became longer than when I was a teacher. I never really expected that to happen, and it, it just worked out, and I really appreciate everything. Um, so, thank you to the administrative team, everyone else that was a part of it, uh, Burgess Town's got a special place in my heart, I really, I love working here, um, if it could be seven miles from my house, it's a little bit different. Um, but that's where we are, but, um, just to echo off what a lot of others have said, it's just been a busy month. Um, uh, I know Melissa mentioned the timeframe, in May, we started, as soon as we were done with PSSA testing in our building, right into senior awards, as soon as senior awards were done, right into Keystone and AP testing. The last day of Keystone testing just happened to be the day of commencement. And then, so then, as soon as we wrapped up commencement, we got into all the different activities. Um, it was really nice seeing the, as many people at commencement as there was this year, um, that's gonna be an interesting tradition, hopefully to continue, um, with the district, I've seen it at other places, and I feel that that's something that's gonna be unique. Um, and I know the teachers appreciated, cause their communication, uh, to me that night was that they were very appreciative of being a part of that. And they gotta laugh probably at how much Marie and I were running around in the back, making certain everyone was there, all the students were in place, everything was there. And I think Marie and I will say, they, the hardest part was making certain that the teachers went in, uh, the correct way, because they didn't have any practice, cause, uh, the students got to practice it that morning. Um, but I just wanna, and then, the last thing I wanted to conclude with, our athletic teams, uh, they participate in sports, uh, the team sports, and then we have, obviously, we had, uh, several track athletes competing that did very well, um, at the Whipple and the PIA double A level, so, um, it's just a wrap on everything, so thank you, everyone have a good summer, hope to see you guys sometime in the fall, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fadden, are you gonna leave the commencement Bible for us?
Absolutely, it's not going anywhere.
And thank you for your years of service, and being such a compassionate leader, for everything you've done for Burgess Town. Your next district's really lucky to have you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Is it any way, um, when we have the flyer that, or the paper that everybody gets at commencement, add an extra page and have all the teachers listed that are still teaching? Cause some of the kids might wanna keep it, and has a list of all the teachers, and there are people that are coming back that are not from the area, they'd like to see the list of teachers that are in here.
Teachers are definitely in the program. It's in the program.
Is it in the program? I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I missed that.
But the, the students don't get a program, that is one thing they don't get.
But their parents.
But the parents get, yes.
Maybe the program could be put in, like, behind the tivana?
On their seats, before, on the floor.
Now, that sounds like Nav's volunteer.
I just went through, I just went through it on Friday, they were all in the seats, like, that's an idea.
Cause I do think that that was a, a wonderful addition to graduation, was recognizing all the teachers and letting them have the area that they do. And that, I, I apologize, I did not realize that they are in the program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fadden.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burgoyne?
Mr. Mr. Burgoyne, divided, for Pat, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pushkar.
Thank you, a couple of things, um, we did have a, an executive session prior to the meeting for, to receive legal counsel. Uh, and then after this evening's meeting, meeting is recessed, um, we will adjourn to the executive session. Uh, the safety and security coordinator reports, confidential reports will be given from the board. Um, one other note, Mrs., we, we did have some, we do have some internet issues today, so, uh, Mrs. Manke had mentioned her report, it is not in Board Docs, uh, we'll make sure that we get it to you, and maybe even send it on separately to make sure we get it. And there, you're right, there are a lot of pictures in there.
Yeah, try to pull out a load.
Lots are happening to the internet today.
Maybe, maybe.
When it, when it, when you come in and it's not internal, it's, it's, it's a blessing.
And, and I don't think I could say it better than, than, than everybody said this evening, just a, a big thank you to everybody. You know, I would say at the end of the school year, if somebody played a reel of the tape of the year on the first day, and said this is everything that's gonna be this year, you might run the other way. Uh, but it's because we're a team, and, and it's the teachers, and the staff, and the administrators, and just everybody kind of coming together, and you take it just a day at a time, and you get through it, and, and, um, just, I'm incredibly grateful for the, for the people that we have, uh, working, uh, in the school district, and also grateful for the, the wisdom and guidance of the board. You're a big part of, of this as well, and, um, you know, like Brian said, it is someplace special. But two individual thanks I do wanna give out tonight, Brian, thank you for all the, the work that you've done. Um, it's not easy being a, a school principal, and, and to have, you know, your time even during the pandemic, and that shift back in March of that year, you know, I wasn't here, but, you know, everybody was working one day and shifting, you know, and parents had to shift, and kids had to shift, but an administrator at the elementary and high school level that just had to go into, you know, uh, did a great job, and I appreciate everything that, that you've done for us, and, uh, you'll be missed.
Thank you.
And, and Cheryl has done, uh, just a phenomenal job making sure that the buses are ready, to kind of one-person show up in the bus garage, the past, you know, six weeks or so, and for PSP to come in, and every bus that is scheduled for a run next year, uh, passed, uh, um, PSP check, um, so that's great, on, on the ones that, you know, scheduled for runs, and, uh, that wouldn't have happened without you kind of staying one step ahead, one step ahead, one step ahead. I guess the, the state police officer said today, uh, when he got here, he was not looking forward to it, cause he knew we were, we were downloading up there, wasn't expecting it, you know, it's Monday, and all those kinds of things, but, uh, Cheryl, thank you.
I don't have anything to conclude, are you?
Thank you, Mr. Pushkar. May I have a motion to approve all administrative reports as presented?
Second.
Mr. Price? Second, Mrs. Seko? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section 5, Budget and Finance, Mr. Taz?
We had a budget and finance meeting this past week to discuss things with the budget. Pay, 5.1, payments of bills, one, motion to ratify list of bills for June 24 as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number 2, motion to authorize administration to pay required invoices from June 10 to 24, August 12, 24, to run the primary meetings.
May I have a second?
Sorry.
Second, Mrs. Seko? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
5.2, I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial statement as presented and place on file to audit.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Seko? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
5.3, LERTA, I'd like to make a motion to waive procedural requirement of district reservation number 2, 2020, regarding the Local Economic Harmonization Tax Assistance Act, so that submission of a written application made by ATA Land Company LLC to hand over township shall be considered timely for application to the district.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
5.4, cooperative purchasing, motion to approve, I'd like to make a motion to include Baltimore City District's participation in coordinated cooperative purchasing programs for 2020. in coordinated cooperative purchasing programs for the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar year. On an ad's lead basis, as presented, items A, written rule, one.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five point five, I'd like to make a motion to accept, through the proposed, that the care provides school position services for twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and per charge of twelve thousand dollars, which represents an increase in the previous school.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five point six, I would like to make motions, number one, I'd like to make a motion to prevent the disposal of following items being no longer usable, uh, to calculators and volleyball.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions?
Like the volleyball, are they in bad shape that they can't be, like, given to preschools or, like, church schools or anything that they don't hold there? Oh, okay, is that, sorry.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to prevent recycling of electronic waste to upcycle LLC as loaded below no cost in district.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion to point the nation cell, in the disposal of the listed outdated files.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section six, education, Mrs. Lemon.
Um, pretty new, first, uh, six point one, health and safety report, nothing to report at the moment. Six point two, the enrollment report can be found online. Six point three, the health and safety, uh, and continuity, continuity of education. I'd like to make a motion, please, to accept the review of the Burgistown Area School District Health and Safety Plan. The board directs the superintendent to closely attach version of the plan on the district website and submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point four, professional development, number one, I'd like to make a motion, please, to ratify the list of professional development as presented, with costs to be paid by Title Two, Maria Schaefer, Beth Roman and Jamie Smith to attend Innovative Learning Cooperative at the intermediate unit in Cole Center, May sixteen, twenty twenty-four. The total approximate cost, two hundred and six dollars and thirty-six cents.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the list of professional development as presented with total, uh, costs to be paid by Title Two. Michelle Burton to attend LEA meetings at intermediate unit one in Cole Center on the following dates, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, November eighteenth and December sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. January twenty-seventh, February twenty-first, March twenty-seventh, April twenty-ninth and May twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-five. Total approximate cost, five hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-four cents.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point five, memorandums of understanding. Number one, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the memo, memorandum of understanding between Blueprints and Burgistown Area School District for Blueprints, Early Learning Programs, Head Start and PA pre-K counts effective July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five as presented.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And number two, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the memorandum of understanding between Washington County Juvenile Probation and Burgistown Area School District in relation to the student assistance program for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point six, course name changes. I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the course name change from Earth and Space Science to Science Seven.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point seven, the VOAG program. I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve listed students to participate in the vocational agriculture program and that, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that's Mackenzie Mitchell, to attend Fort Cherry School District.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And six point eight, sanction school-related activities. I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the overnight trip for the varsity softball team to participate in the ripping experience in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee for approximately fourteen student athletes, grades nine through twelve, on March twentieth through March twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five at no cost to the district and parent guardian permission.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section seven, personnel, Mr. Price.
Seven point one is the employment disclaimer. Seven point two, resignations, and motion to accept three grand resignations as listed for the following personnel. Nicole Klein, your book advisor. Andrea Zupanic, your book co-advisor. Justin Porst, your ninth grade boys' basketball coach. Glenn Brady, eighth grade boys' basketball coach. Byron Fadden, the MHS principal, resignation. Russell Dicer, teacher, is a re, intend to retire, that's a motion.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point three is additional compensation. Motion to approve the additional compensation items as presented. A for the extended school year for June tenth to June thirteenth through seventeenth to the twentieth, July fifteenth to the eighteenth, twenty-two to twenty-five, twenty-four. Emily Mitchell, substitute teacher. Title one, summer pre-K, pre-kindergarten camp, grade kindergarten, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brittany Crowe, instructor, C summer school cyberteachers, June seventeenth, uh, till July twenty-sixth, they're across Courtney Wallace and Jamie Smith, that's a motion.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point four, deals with reclassifications. So motion to ratify the following reclassification of positions. A, B, I'll go A, D and C, that's a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point five, deals with moves of absence. Motion to approve Tanya Inman, general cafeteria worker for the following unpaid days, May eight, nine and ten, May twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, that's a motion.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, motion to approve employee zero nine seven six oh nine for an intermittent, uh, MLAV, the bathroom from August twenty, twenty twenty-four through October seventh, twenty twenty-four, that's a motion.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point six, deals with substitutes, motion to approve the substitute list, excuse me, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented. Teacher one, Valerie Seig.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, athletics and related activities, Mrs. Lemon.
Um, once again, the athletic report can be found on board.
Transportation, Mrs. Sacco.
Um, the report is online, but I also wanna commend Cheryl and all that you've done getting everything started. First year, I just see us. With the state police and everything today, and also she and I respoke it, um, when we had our meeting about a month and a half ago. I know myself, even being as a chair here, I've never actually been up to the bus garage, I've never seen it, I've never been inside of it. And I don't know if everybody else has, but I think maybe before our August meeting, if maybe there was an opportunity before the executive that we could go up and Cheryl could give us a little tour.
Do you want us there, Cheryl?
We talked about it. Yes, we actually, she and I, we discussed it, and I think, you know, that is a lot of money in that building. We see these buildings down here and there's a lot of money in this building. I think we owe it to ourselves and also for Cheryl to explain some of the things that go on up there that we possibly have that chance either in August or September, depending on how things are going, that we all take the opportunity to go and maybe see what our money is going on up there.
Coffee, donuts.
Are you, are you having a plan? Yeah, is there gonna be coffee? I don't care about the donuts. I want coffee. And then went on to nine point two, school transportation agreements. Motive, motion to ratify the school transportation agreement as presented with parent guardian permission. A Dana Fertini, teacher to transport students to Living Treasures Animal Park in Newcastle, PA on May sixteen, twenty twenty-four, for the life skills class.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I can also add, I don't have to give her a couple of months notice for us to come up there, I am sure you could eat off the floor up there right now. Or donuts.
Section ten, buildings and grounds, Mr. Taz.
We had a building and grounds meeting this past week to discuss the summer projects. Ten point one, building and grounds report is found online. Ten point two, I would like to make a motion to approve release of two classroom buildings for Blueprints for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in amount of twenty-four thousand dollars for the pre-K and Head Start programs required to be presented as presented.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten point three, I'd like to make a motion to continue services with community service and for a while into services agency with Washington County Community Services regarding the FITS program.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions?
There isn't FITS program.
So Craig can explain that, or, or more, explain a little more for you, the, the work that's going on.
So the FITS program, um, they're all in, in the prisons and the jails.
Congress, okay.
Yeah, and they'll come out here.
They do the weed whacking and.
And they'll do some weed whacking, some cleanup force and some, you know, mowing, things like that, yep.
It's more.
We, we usually get them for a Saturday and a Sunday, and about a half a day on Sunday.
You get them for more weekends.
Yeah, right on.
Who's the group that cleans up Bvington Road?
It's the same.
Is it, I thought so, but.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section eleven, Western Area Career Technology Center, Mrs. Sacco.
I'm gonna follow up with, um, Mrs. Schaefer and how nice, uh, Western Area Career and Technical Center. Their certification program was extremely well put together, it was nice. They don't do the drive-through that they did for several years because of the pandemic. It's actually a very nice ceremony and if anybody would like to go, it's, it's very much well worth it. You see kids from all over the school, all other school districts, but it's pretty awesome when you see your kids walking across and how proud they are and it's, it's a really nice, um, thing that they do there. Uh, also, they had signing day, um, I think I mentioned it, I'm not sure, last month, everything's kind of a blur. Even his parents, May, is a blur, I don't remember anything. Um, but, uh, House Sports had their signing day with their scholarships. Western Area, the same day that they had, uh, the senior recognition, uh, day here. They were rushing back so that they could be there for signing day where kids were signing on for jobs and that's a pretty awesome thing to see. Uh, our meeting is usually the third Wednesday of the month, it has been moved to this Wednesday, so, um, for some, to fill out some people's schedules. And right now, that's all I have.
Food service, Mrs. Walsh.
Twelve point one, food service report, I mean, food service report is available online. Twelve point two, food service management company contract. I'd like to make a motion to accept the food service management cost reimbursable contract between the Burgistown Area School District and the Aramark Student Nutrition, beginning July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five, pending approval by PDE.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve point three, Blueprints Meal Service Agreements. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meal service agreements for the Blueprints Pre-Kindergarten and Head Start Programs for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section thirteen, student discipline, Mr. Burgoyne.
Nothing to report.
I must call you the other term, sorry. That is pretty close. I have something that I'd like to ask regarding the student discipline. Um, for a while now, we've had many discussions about doing, um, on the smores, uh, bullet point of what parents are expecting, what they can expect, I should say, if their students get disciplined. Um, what, some of the procedures and some of the process, and I know it's broke down in the handbooks, but I can tell you most parents don't take the time to read the handbook or if they're flashing through it because of a certain situation that just immediately happened. I've had several parents come to me and say that they'd like to have something broken down a little bit more simple. We have something on our smores at the end of every week that says you cannot get onto a school bus, it's a law. I think to save our administration and our staff, I think parents need to have a better breakdown. Quick reference to, the school's not responsible for this. If it's happening outside of school, if there's bullying that's going on, it is not the school district's job to handle that. Parents need to know where the fine line is, where the school steps in and where it's their job as parents. Because I think a lot of parents rely on the school district for too much sometimes and they don't know where that line is.
The parents that reached out to you, did you tell them about that, Mr. Bush?
Absolutely. And there were instances that happened, it's funny that I talked to him and even spoke to him and told him that they would be concerned.
We've talked about this.
It's difficult to put something together in a snapshot, and I know Mrs. Schaefer has a parent room, um, that I know that she met with and, you know, that they're gonna meet again, maybe that's something I can talk about, but it's really difficult outside of that.
I, I, listen, I.
I think I know what you're, 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 you're asking.
It's a very broad thing to explain or understand and there's, but I can tell you that parents don't even think about, if their child is being cyber bullied, if there is something that the school district, that they're handling it in the way that they are able to handle it, you can go to the police, you're not gonna be crucified for taking matters into your own hands. I think some people don't, they still think that it's the police officer at the school district that handles things or it's the superintendent or the principal. They're relying too much on our staff and it's putting them in a position.
If someone contacts you about that, Mrs. Schaefer, do, do you, I'm assuming, you explain to them how that works?
I do advise them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I have no doubt that they do.
I hate to put something on a smore and, and it be in someone's face every week and then it put our feet to the fire with something.
Right, and I, like I said, it is a.
Link to the handbook?
Even a link to the handbook that's specifically for that, that's a great idea.
That's probably.
Because I know that maybe.
I don't want any of our administrators to be.
No, and I, that's a good point, to, as something that's specific thing, no. I think that's a great idea just to have to that. I just think sometimes a lot of things get misconstrued and if it's in black and white and they can see it and it, it puts them out of the line of fire, because you should have done this, you should have done that, why didn't you call the police? There are things that happen outside of school that is not their responsibility. And I think, as we've talked before, bullying is a broad term and it's never gonna go away and I think the easier the things that we can do to help them as administrators not have to have, be in that line of fire.
Phil, what year did they take the paddle away?
Phil, what year was that?
I heard him.
What year did you take the paddle away?
I didn't. It's been made up for positive use.
Uh, fourteen, policy, Mr. Shalinski.
Uh, fourteen, one deal's final reading, motion to approve the listed policy as presented. A, policy seven oh two point two, naming school district facilities.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sacco, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any old business, new business? Legislated, Mr. metallic, I'm, I'm gonna guess who, anything excited there. Um, may I have a motion to recess and reconvene on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty and the administrators do not need to be in the room today, just in case, so.